Uh, uh, motion.
Motion.
All right, motion by Rob.
Second.
Second by Ms. Faith. All right, Ms. Brenda, put one minutes.
Yes.
Faith?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
And Bonnie?
Yes.
All right, we have all business. Catherine, you're gonna read the second reading on the zero two five zero four three.
City of Shepherdsville, Kentucky, ordinance zero two five zero four three, and ordinance amending the Bullock County City zoning order and the Bullock County City zoning map is amended, changing the zoning of one point six nine nine acres, more or less located at West Blue Look Road in the city of Shepherdsville, Bullock County, Kentucky, also known as parcel zero three six zero 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 one three D, from R three residential to B two central business. This is sponsored by council member Bonnie Inlow. Summary, section one. The Bullock County Joint Planning Commission had a public hearing on September eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, docket number two zero two five Z dash three six, and based on the testimony and evidence presented at that hearing, recommended that the Bullock County City zoning order and the Bullock County City zoning map be amended to change the zoning of one point six nine nine acres, more or less, located at West Blue Look Road, also known as parcel zero three six zero 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 one three D, hereon after subject property from R three residential to B two central business. Section two sets forth that the city council had a public hearing on October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Section three sets forth that the city council adopts the Bullock County Joint Planning Commission's findings of fact and recommendations, including but not limited to any and all restrictions placed on the subject property as set forth in docket number two zero two five Z dash three six. Section four sets forth that the Bullock County City zoning order and the Bullock County City zoning map are hereby amended to change the zoning of the subject property from R three residential to B two central business. Section five sets forth the severability clause. Section six sets forth the repeal of prior ordinances in conflict with this ordinance. Section seven sets forth the publication requirement.
All right, and these are all part of three together, is that? Yeah.
No.
I'm sorry, this is the one.
Yeah.
Oh, that's one different one, all right. So, I need a motion.
Motion.
Uh. Yep.
Do you have some comments?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
I think Jenny had comments, did you want to go first?
Yeah, I can go. I'm, um, I was. I, I know there are good and bad to all things, um, with Dollar Generals. I'm not a fan of Dollar Generals, um. They are accessible to people who, without transportation, and they do create jobs and tax revenues, but they also create com- competition with local businesses and oftentimes will run those out of business. Um, they create unhealthy food deserts for people and, um, because they sell heavily processed foods and they normally don't have fresh meat, fresh fruit, uh, fruit and vegetables. Um, and a lot of times they will capture existing revenues and they don't produce new revenues, so I'm just not a fan. They also can attract crime because of their low staffing levels. So that's my take on Dollar General.
The crime, what, I'm missing, that you said, how do they, yes, Bonnie.
Low second levels, it'll attract crime.
The K O A that's by me that has low income apartments, but it doesn't have any problems with crime. Um, it's, it's been nice, it's actually very nice. I love going there because it's right next door. So, saves me a lot, so I don't have a problem with them being there.
I would like to see crossing for people from, and I know it's a state road and there's really nothing we could do now, but we could call the state and say, hey, you know, and I know you're on top of that probably. You know, just a crossing for the people from Mallard.
So, that's probably, you're, most of it, uh, on, you look at both segments there, so Mallard, most of them will be going there to just grab something and go home. It's the other side, it's the other side of West Blue Look, you have the apartment complexes, those folks need some kind of at least having to get something, whether it's bad, whether they came around.
They will benefit greatly from that.
Yeah, I agree.
And they will, and there's one at Bell's Mill. That's busy, I mean, it's busy, uh, so, you know, we, we don't.
There's one on forty-four West, too.
I love the one at Bell's Mill.
So, the, what? A cricket, we got a cricket. It's our ringtone.
We're going fishing.
We're going fishing. All right, but I think it's important for people, now, uh, uh, Jennifer, appreciate your comments, but I think the important part is, is that we don't make that ruling on that and you don't have the s- the stats on the, the crime. You're saying because your opinion of low staffing that it would cause crime, I, unless you've got something that tells me that, you've got something you didn't send anybody, I mean, if you're bringing that up, that's fine. But I think it's important, we're, we're accusing them of being somewhat of a criminal element there in the environment because of being built there. I think it's important we realize that there's more, when we look at these things that happen in our community, we are trying to make things convenient for them. Maybe they don't have the best selections, but I can think of other places. And as far as local businesses, I think the community has a choice. We do wanna support local businesses, but we don't, we don't tell pe- people they can't come into the city.
And there's nothing else down there to compete with it.
That's true too. I just wanna make sure from a standpoint when we say that it conflicts with local, local is something we try to support, those businesses. Competition is competition, that's what America is built on.
And most local don't stay up until six o'clock, you know?
Yeah.
That's the only thing.
Yeah, I think it's.
Door stores open till one, um.
Yeah, no, no problem.
Sorry, I didn't even hear.
No, you're fine, Rob, did you wanna?
Eight, eight, eight o'clock. And I think they're open till ten.
Yeah. Rob, did you have something you wanna add to this?
Uh, not much, but I used to go to that Dollar Store by K O A too. Um, and it had been robbed a couple times, like, right after I went in it, it was robbed. Um, and we did look up some statistics on that and the crime that does increase around.
So, do you have something you can share with the council and, and, I mean, just, could you send us something in email so we at least?
I can.
I would love to see that, because I think, yeah, that's Emily.
Oh, well, I just thought you guys finished, but I could just say something after, whoa, did I, you know, right?
Me too.
I can't see Emily for that too. Hi, Emily.
Um, actually, you can go ahead while I'm looking at stuff if, if you want.
Um, yeah, sure.
I did get a call from a I did get a call from a couple people today that had no objections to it for being there.
Yeah, it's just, it's a convenient piece for a lot of, as a, what's that?
About half and half, people who are pro and against, um.
Half and half of which, I mean, of our city?
Half and half of the people I've heard.
Okay, half and.
People in our area.
Yep, uh, in your area, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
I worked at a Dollar Store like years ago when I first started at school, just night job for extra money. I never had any trouble. One right here in Shepherdsville.
Yeah. So I just, again, I, I do wanna hear from everybody, and, and Mike, I appreciate your comments, Faith, Rob, Jennifer, appreciate it. Brad, do you have anything to add, I know?
Uh, yeah, I think Faith brings up a good point. I'd, I'd like just to look at that pedestrian access piece of it.
Yeah.
Uh, I know we got the sidewalk on one side, but, uh, as we improve that road, I assume that'll be widened at some point.
Yeah, we're gonna have, so, one of the things that, just so y'all know, we're looking for places across, uh, different roads, uh, taking the solar ones, you look at each time, they have a lot of them, the solar panels that actually show you, and what it does is it has a crosswalk there and it, and the, the sign itself has lights around it, so you always see it. But that's not a guarantee, you push that button or, you know, it blinks off, everybody, that might, you're walking. Please, we're gonna do a bunch of P S As and make sure it's not just an automatic cross a road, just because it says you can cross.
Sure.
You better still look, 'cause, I mean, people on their phones, all kinds of crazy stuff out there. But we are looking at that, uh, uh, in different areas, not just that area. But I think if you're looking at it from the whole, thirty thousand foot, for, for the people that live there, especially the apartments on the one side, they'd be walking safely there, and for right now, most people in Mallard Lake are gonna drive that way, but hey, let me stop in here, grab a couple things. This sh- this isn't the destiny, Kroger's still going busy and so is Walmart.
Right.
Those will get your, your food there, but, no, I appreciate all the comments, Bonnie, thank you as well. Uh, Brad, appreciate it, welcome back, uh, we just wanna make sure Mr. Whitaker made it through all that mess with the flights. So we're glad to have him this evening.
I tracked him the whole time, like, where the hell?
We're glad to have him. Emily, would you like to?
Sure, I just wanted to add, I appreciate the comments, um, I wish we had, we had received those before the second reading tonight. Um, I don't think that, uh, speculation on crime is related to the, is the zoning, uh, to the question of is the zoning appropriate for this area. Um, we had the planning commission favorable rec- favorable recommendation that it is favorable for the, it is recommended for the area. Uh, we had pe- a person come and speak in favor of it. The comments that you guys have received to your personal devices or emails, we don't have any of that, so as far as I know, it's not part of the record that you all have opposition um, for this project, and, and then related to the crosswalk, I know that was a comment that was brought up, um, as a concern, and as the mayor said, we, it is a state road, but we will work with the state to provide one if we can, that's a state determination. The, there are plans to widen that road eventually, and that's why as part of the, um, restrictions or, uh, binding elements that was discussed at the planning commission, that we would dedicate that twenty-foot easement on the front for the right, potential widening of right away when that does occur, so we have addressed that um, as a potential solution for development in the future.
Now, am I wrong, or did I dream this? Is, isn't that development back there supposed to have like walking pass and stuff, so that might help a little bit for the Dollar Store? You know, the, um.
Where, where the mobile home park is?
Uh, yeah, well, the new development back, back behind.
Or the one to the, to the north of it, like, across the street.
Would that connect then maybe to that?
Yeah, they've been talking, 'cause the, the person that owns the property now owns both that development and this property, so they're talking about adding that pedestrian access.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
And I talked to Chris Sims today and he said he's got a little bit of
Yes.
extra property that he might, he's trying to think of something to do. And he thought about getting with Mallard Lake and seeing if they had any ideas.
Yeah, 'cause there, there is, um, there was talk about the pedestrian from the mobile home park right behind, because there's, we couldn't, it wasn't wide enough for a drive, but they wanted to add some sort of connection, and then Chris Sims is interested.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, a lot of good ideas and things, I mean, and, and, one thing that.
Thank you.
One thing that Emily brought up, I'm gonna make sure for you all, this is moving forward, mind of reflection of this year, fact finding is very important for the council. Now, if you've got, if you've got concerns, please reach out to the developer, this time it's Emily, it could be somebody else. Please let them know your concerns and maybe they can give you an answer or something that you wanna know about. Uh, I don't wanna wait till a second reading, get ready to make a motion, and then we're starting to talk about it. I just wanna make sure that we have that, because, and what we do, whatever we do find, if we find it, make sure that fact of finding is sent to everybody, so that everybody sees, so we can make sure, especially Ms. Catherine, 'cause she's the one that's gonna take that fact finding. If we ever get into a dispute, it's gonna say, is that really legit? We have to make sure, because we put ourselves in a situation where if we vote on something and we don't have the fact of finding, the city's gonna be liable. And we don't want that to be the case. We wanna make sure that we do a good job. This council is obligated to make sure there's always an opportunity. If there's concerns, we get it. We wanna hear those. Bring it with something that we can give to everybody, so it's gonna be shared and, and keep that conversation going. That's what should've been obviously in our first reading, but that's okay, I mean, we still appreciate the comments at any time.
Yeah, definitely appreciate the comments, just wanna make sure that we have some sort of evidence before you walk.
Uh, stay calm. Stay calm. Okay? Thank you, Ms. Emily.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
All right. All right, so.
And yeah, Chris Sims did mention today, I gotta talk to him as well, um, if he gets his business in there too, he's gonna have like, he said he had like fifty cameras on his current lot, and it would be about the same, he'd have a lot of cameras.
Right.
So a lot of security with it too, okay.
So there are pros and cons.
There is, uh, with anything.
Yeah, any, I mean, in any place, just to, uh, your question there about being robbed, that those things could happen to anybody at any time, it's not specifically for Dollar Generals.
How we're parking lot.
Yeah. All right, so, any more questions, any more comments? Good? All right, Ms. Bonnie, you had a motion on the table?
I did.
You have a second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Brenda?
All right. Bonnie?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Faith?
Yes.
Jennifer?
No.
And Rob?
Uh, I'll be on note too.
All right. Thank you, council. All right. We're all done with that, like, six point two, uh, our next thing, Catherine, Ms. Catherine Dozier, summary of zero two five dash zero four four. And these are the three together, is that correct?
These are the ones that are owned by Phil of Grace.
Yep. All right, so I wanna make sure I'm on the right page now, all right, here you go.
City of Shepherdsville, Kentucky, ordinance zero two five zero four four, and ordinance amending the Bullock County City zoning order and the Bullock County City zoning map as amended, changing the zoning of thirteen point two nine acres, more or less located at six two seven five South Preston Highway in the city of Shepherdsville, Bullock County, Kentucky, also known as parcel zero four eight zero 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 one seven A, from A G Agricultural to R three residential, sponsored by council member Jennifer Mendez. Summary, section one, the Bullock County Joint Planning Commission held a public hearing on September eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, docket number two zero two five Z dash three seven, and based on the testimony and evidence presented at that hearing, recommended that the Bullock County City zoning order and the Bullock County Sec- City zoning map be amended to change the zoning of thirteen point two nine acres, more or less located at six two seven five South Preston Highway, also known as parcel zero four eight zero 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 one seven A, hereon after subject property from A G Agricultural to R three residential. Section two sets forth that the city council had a public hearing on October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Section three sets forth that the city council adopts the Bullock County Joint Planning Commission's findings of fact and recommendations, including but not limited to any and all restrictions placed on the subject property as set forth in docket number two zero two five Z dash three seven. Section four sets forth that the Bullock County City zoning order and the Bullock County City zoning map are hereby amended to change the zoning of the subject property from A G Agricultural to R three residential. Section five sets forth the severability clause. Section six sets forth the repeal of prior ordinances in conflict with this ordinance. Section seven sets forth publication requirement.
All right, so, just real quick, this is also part of the three properties. This is what we annexed into the city during our budget voting. We obviously voted the, the annexation piece in, and this is obviously about building more homes, and we appreciate that you guys are doing good stuff. No, I'm not you. Talking to kind of everybody. Uh, but I wanna make sure that you guys know, I need a motion on this, please.
Motion.
Brad, second?
Second.
Second by Rob? All right, Ms. Brenda? Well, it's not you, I know who you are. You're coming up.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Yes.
Faith?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
Thank you, council, and that goes back to, that you started this whole, kinda that area there, we appreciate that, there's gonna be some good things for us. So now I'm looking at you. All right. Ms. Catherine, zero two five, zero?
Four five.
Four five, yeah.
City of Shepherdsville, Kentucky, ordinance zero two five zero four five, and ordinance amending the Bullock County City zoning order and the Bullock County City zoning map as amended, changing the zoning of two point five two point five zero acres, more or less located at six two seven five South Preston Highway in the city of Shepherdsville, Bullock County, Kentucky, also known as parcel zero four eight zero 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 one seven A, from A G Agricultural to R three residential, sponsored by council member Jennifer Mendez. Summary, section one, the Bullock County Joint Planning Commission had a public hearing on September eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, docket number two zero two five Z dash three nine, and based on the testimony and evidence presented at that hearing, recommended that the Bullock County City zoning order and the Bullock County City zoning map are be amended to change the zoning of two point five zero acres, more or less located at six two seven five South Preston Highway, also known as parcel zero four eight zero 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 one seven A, hereon after subject property from A G Agricultural to R three residential. Section two sets forth that the city council had a public hearing on October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Section three sets forth that the city council adopts the Bullock County Joint Planning Commission's findings of fact and recommendations, including but not limited to any and all restrictions placed on the subject property as set forth in docket number two zero two five Z dash three nine. Section four sets forth that the Bullock County City zoning order and the Bullock County City zoning map are hereby amended to change the zoning of the subject property from A G Agricultural to R three residential. Section five sets forth the severability clause. Section six sets forth the repeal of prior ordinances in conflict with this ordinance. Section seven sets forth the publication requirement.
All right. All right, on this motion, motion by Rob?
Second.
Second by Ms. Jennifer? Ms. Brenda?
Mike?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Faith?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
All right, thank you, council, and last but not least on this, zero two five zero four six, please.
City of Shepherdsville, Kentucky, ordinance zero two five zero four six, and ordinance amending the Bullock County City zoning order and the Bullock County City zoning map as amended, changing the zoning of nine point one zero acres, more or less located at South Preston Highway in the city of Shepherdsville, Bullock County, Kentucky, also known as parcel zero four eight zero 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 one seven B, from R one residential to R three residential, sponsored by council member Jennifer Mendez. Summary, section one, the Bullock County Joint Planning Commission had a public hearing on September eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, docket number two zero two five Z dash three eight, and based on the testimony and evidence presented at that hearing, recommended that the Bullock County City zoning order and the Bullock County City zoning map be amended to change the zoning of nine point one zero acres, more or less located at South Preston Highway, also known as parcel zero four eight zero 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 one seven B, hereon after subject property from R one residential to R three residential. Section two sets forth that the city council had a public hearing on October thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Section three sets forth that the city council adopts the Bullock County Joint Planning Commission's findings of fact and recommendations, including but not limited to any and all restrictions placed on the subject property as set forth in docket number two zero two five Z dash three eight. Section four sets forth that the Bullock County City zoning order and the Bullock County City zoning map are hereby amended to change the zoning of the subject property from R one residential to R three residential. Section five sets forth the severability clause. Section six sets forth the repeal of prior ordinances in conflict with this ordinance. Section seven sets forth publication requirement.
All right, I need a motion.
Second.
All right. All right, Ms. Brenda?
Brad?
Yes.
Faith?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
All right, well, thank you. I don't see anybody from that to appear this. All right.
Mark is.
Want you?
Mark Edison.
Oh. Mark's, uh, uh. Hide in front of you, well, we're all good. I just wanna make sure, thank you for being here today. And, uh, it's been a little cold, so I probably won't see you out Sunday working in the yard.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Do you have anything you wanna add, are we good? All right. Have a great evening, sir, thank you for being here. All right, Ms. Catherine, zero two five zero four seven?
City of Shepherdsville, Kentucky, ordinance zero two five zero four seven, and ordinance amending the Bullock County City zoning order and the Bullock County City zoning map as amended, changing the zoning of five point zero acres, more or less located at five two two eight South Preston Highway in the city of Shepherdsville, Bullock County, Kentucky, also known as parcel zero four eight C zero 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 nine zero zero one, from B one highway business to R three residential, sponsored by council member Bonnie Inlow. Summary, section one, the Bullock County Joint Planning Commission had a public hearing on October ninth, two thousand twenty-five, docket number two zero two five Z dash four four, and based on testimony and evidence presented at that hearing, recommended that the Bullock County City zoning order and the Bullock County City zoning map be amended to change the zoning of five point zero acres, more or less located at five two two eight South Preston Highway, also known as parcel zero four eight C zero 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 nine zero zero one, hereon after subject property from B one highway business to R three residential. Section two sets forth that the city council adopts the Bullock County Joint Planning Commission's findings of fact and recommendations, including but not limited to any and all restrictions placed on the subject property as set forth in docket number zero, two zero two five Z dash four four. Section three sets forth that the Bullock County City zoning order and the Bullock County City zoning map are hereby amended to change the zoning of the subject property from B one highway business to R three residential. Section four sets forth the severability clause. Section five sets forth the repeal of prior ordinances in conflict with this ordinance. Section six sets forth publication requirement.
All right, now. All right, I, is there any further questions, we're talking about the country market?
Um, did we have a site plan for that? I know we had like a preliminary, preliminary, uh, site plan. Okay, I guess if we're getting that now.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your quick work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Be sure, I need to get one for myself.
All right, thank you.
How about with, um?
Oh, here, we got, do you need one?
Yeah.
I've seen all this, here. All right, I don't, did anybody have any questions? Rob, you're looking at this, but, I mean, is there anything questions, if you know what we're doing, what's, what was the total on the multi units?
Uh, the total number of units?
Yeah.
It's, uh, eighty plus or minus.
Eight, yeah, I, I think eighty-four, so, I remember, I try to remember the number you gave us in the, the presentation we were originally on that.
My two, my two main concerns were, um, the setbacks to make sure that we accommodate for the widening of, uh, South Preston.
How, how much are you needing for that?
I don't know.
So, so that piece is actually south right now, it's, it's, it's from Preston all the way to two forty-five is the area to talk about, actually four lanes, not past that intersection piece.
Not past it.
Not, not originally.
Hopefully, hopefully eventually.
Well, but I mean, right now, that's interesting conversation, you know how this will work, right, you see how Preston got four lanes up here, how long it took? It's gonna be in that conversation, so before it ever comes to that, as far as where they're at, you've got needs to be coming into the place that you've got, and I think it's that, off of that road, it's the twenty feet. Is it twenty feet or thirty feet of that, of, of, on the side of the road, when you come off, where you're coming in to your co- apartment complex? That's what you got, I, I didn't, I don't have it now, let me look at yours here.
We're gonna try to accommodate that, you know what I'm saying, but we just need, we need, we need some number from you guys, and what we need to try to.
Well, there's, there's not, there's not even a conversation yet about this, okay, so we're not gonna, I mean, just for your benefit, there, there is something that you want to at least keep in mind, but on that, they've made no discussion past, anything past two forty-five that I know of, and, and I, you know, I, I've heard that conversation a couple times. There's, they're trying to get to two forty-five, and there's not even money allocated for it yet. They're, they're just in conversation, we do think it's a possibility, because of all the development on there, especially with the industrial park piece that's on sixty-one, it's gonna be needed. But, at this point, there's nothing definite on that, but, and you're, and you're coming off there, you're not gonna, you're not coming up to the road.
No.
All right, so you're gonna have an easement piece that gets you on, on that side of the road. But I can't remember, didn't you bring that up in the conversation we had, where we first talked about this?
We, we had talked about putting a turning lane for the southbound traffic so that they could get out and let traffic flow. Uh, that is something that we're gonna incorporate in.
Long, you know, long, we're gonna work with the state, that's a state road, but I mean, as long as we can work with the state, get the easements.
I will tell you this, since you're doing that, as far as getting this approved, that's not, that's not my concern, my concern is, since you're gonna talk about that and having that, uh, why don't you, when you ask them that, there's, they're, they're gonna have some forecast of what they think they're gonna do that road, I, I'm telling you, I don't think there's anything that, that's in the plans right now. I'm almost, I can almost guarantee it.
I just don't like to be in the situation we're in with forty-four, where.
Yeah, but we're talking about just, we're talking about, I mean, we're talking about a couple blocks here, I mean, the forty-four is a situation because that's the all the people on that property. They had bought, they, they needed to buy all that property sixty years ago, Rob.
Right, well, now we're sixty, maybe sixty years prior to them we're doing.
So, so, why don't you, why don't you make sure when you talk to them, be sure that when you ask them about your, your turning lane, ask them if there's discussion about that, 'cause if they do, reach out to me, then I'll, I'll make sure that, if we have to, if we have to amend what we do on that, I, I think that, we're, we're presupposing that piece happened, we're talking such a small section of the road, you know, so, for so much of that all the way through there, uh, I think it's gonna be years before that's ever discussed. Because you're getting into, so when you get past, past two forty-five, the photography starts changing on them. They're not very kind to that, as far as trying to expand that road, they wanna make sure they got you another outlet to go to sixty-five, and that's where they wanna stop it. That's at least the conversation that I know of. Most anything else is just all hypothetical. You know, so, you do have to ask them about that, so when you do, please reach back, back out to me, you know, and then I will send something to the council. Please reach back, back out to me, you know, and then we'll send something to the council. Just to keep them up on that piece. I think it's, it's a good question. I don't have a problem with the question. I just think we're making a hypothetical that's not there yet.
I think that the, the building setback's gonna be such that if they do need to make that, there's gonna be land there for them to, uh.
Yeah, because you're interested, you're not, you're not coming right to the front there. You're gonna be from here to that wall.
Yeah.
On the worst. Yeah, if they had to take more of it.
We, we may try to leave a little extra space if in case it needs some more space or whatever. We, we've been, we've been trying to incorporate down in their plan because we already had mentioned that once, so we're trying to make some kind of accommodation for it. We just, you know.
Do things. When you do reach out to the state, they tell you what they got to, and you find that, send me an email, what they said about that, and also. Uh, what you wanna consider as far as your plans that you have now, if you want to throw that in, that's fine. You still have to, if you submitted these plans, you would have to go back to the board adjustments to change that as far as, uh. Do you have to not change that? If you propose them as far as, when you propose them, how, how much off the road?
They, the, the planning commission did not.
Yeah, we did.
The planning commission had no restriction on how far off the road they had to be.
Right, then you're fine.
They just have to follow whatever.
Just find out the state, just find out the state.
Whatever R three is, that's all they have to follow. They don't have to do anything.
So has it changed from what we got before?
It's R three. We, we've gotta change through plans, I think, to R three.
Oh, no.
No, no, no.
On the layout, no, no, we, we, we don't have a, uh.
Rob is bringing up the hypothetical if something happens and, and it's, you know, because of forty-four, all those years of not doing something there. But in that case.
You didn't do a proposal yet?
No, we didn't have a proposal. Well, the, the civil engineer just kinda put something on paper, but it, uh, it's, it's getting worked around due to, uh, other issues. So we're, we, we don't have anything set on what the, the layout of the interior of the property's gonna be yet. Uh, we do have the creek crossing.
You got permits and stuff you gotta get.
Yes, so, you know, there's, there's things that are gonna dictate. You, we don't know what our building count's gonna be yet.
So, what, that would be, that's great. Do the thing with the state then, but do come back to me and Arthur. And I think there's, I, well, make sure. Well, I think we're fine. I'm not, I'm not concerned about, but I do appreciate the question.
Is there any other questions?
Was there any opposition from the, um, neighbors?
No.
We haven't heard any yet.
I haven't either.
Okay. All right, anybody else? All right. Yeah, motion?
Motion.
Yeah, look how quick that was. Bonnie got him.
I think Bonnie got him.
Second.
Second for Rob, okay. All right, Brenda?
Third.
Mike?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Faith?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
And Jennifer?
Yes.
Thank you all, Luann, it's because you brought Luann. That's why, just her being here, just magic happens when, is it right? She shows up, magic happens? Is this what I? Uh, you owe me five dollars. You owe me five dollars for that compliment. No, it's all good, but listen, congratulations. We appreciate that. I, I, listen, I may be a little biased, but I'm a little excited about housing. I really am. There's a lot of people wanting to move here and our inventory is low. And we know that with what you're doing, uh, obviously the property just out there on sixty-one. And some opportunities, maybe even on forty-four, we know what the, the big project there is behind Bradshaw Estates. We have an opportunity next two and a half years to actually have the housing that we need for people that really wanna enjoy our city. We're always gonna keep working on the traffic issues and we're gonna keep working water. But we appreciate you investing in our community. And again, you started all this and we thank you for that.
I like it because I hope, um, by having the apartments here and close to the industrial park and all that, that they can just drive there. Keep some traffic off sixty-five and make it a little easier on all of us.
Yeah, if you remember when we first talked about this and any of the things, that all the, the opportunity to get on sixty-five is right here at one twelve. So if they are gonna go to the industrial park, they're gonna take one fourteen. Yeah, so good stuff. Thank you all. Did you wanna say something?
No.
I just. All right, no worries. We're coming at you again. All right. So, Ms. Catherine, this is zero two five zero four eight, this is a text amendment, please.
City of Shepherdsville ordinance zero two five zero four eight and ordinance adopting text amendment two zero two five T dash zero two, adding section five point six zero five. Residential zone R five to the zoning regulations for Bullock County and the cities of Hillview, Lebanon Junction, Mount Washington and Shepherdsville, sponsored by council member Bonnie Inlow. Summary. Section one sets forth that the zoning regulations for Bullock County and the cities of Hillview, Lebanon Junction, Mount Washington, Shepherdsville are amended to add a new section creating a new resident, residential zone known as R five. With principal permitted uses, permitted accessory uses and structures, area requirements and setback requirements. Section two sets forth the severability clause. Section three sets forth the repillipar ordinances in conflict with this ordinance. Section four sets forth the publication requirement.
Motion.
Second. All right. All right, basically, I understand what we're talking about here. Just, just changing the French a little bit, obviously.
I got a que, I got a question.
Yes, sir.
Since this affects several cities, although Hillview adopted it, we probably will. Has, have other cities already adopted it, or are they?
Well, I know of Hillview because we dealt with, uh, a development, uh, housing development that actually was, when they came and talked to us, uh, they said, hey, we're looking at this as a maximizing really the lots. That's really what they're doing. They just, they've cut it just a little bit. Uh, I think they were concerned a lot of times when you see lots cut too short, you see diminishing of the house itself. And so, and then not having, uh, talk about fires and being too close to each other. Uh, there's a number of, uh, uh, a little concerns, but I think the biggest thing is for most looking at housing development and the cost, they're just trying to really maximize what they can do, what they can build on a lot. That's why it's, it's out there. It doesn't, it means we just accept that preface. We don't have to accept it for each development. We have to decide if it now fits what we want to do. So if there's a concern for it, council, you still have some, am I correct in that?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, to answer your question, I don't know if Hillview has adopted it. I know that they will because they actually supported the text amendment. Um, Lebanon Junction had their first reading last Monday, so I don't know, we don't know how they're gonna vote. And I do not know where Mount Washington stands. I haven't heard anything.
Okay.
From a city standpoint, obviously the only two right now, Mike, would be the Hillview, uh, interest in, in us.
Right. I just wondered, cause I know, um. Mount Washington adopted one. Few years back that nobody else did, and then it failed and it's off the books now, so.
Yeah. Well, I think obviously it's, it's managing that. And again, it's obviously still your, your due diligence to see if that fits.
Yeah.
Whatever is being developed in the city. All right, let me give it that.
Okay. Mike?
Yes.
Faith?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
All right, the last of our old business, zero two five zero four nine, is the zoning regulations. Expenses, schedule fees.
City of Shepherdsville ordinance zero two five zero four nine and ordinance submitting section nine point four zero zero, schedule of fees, charges and expenses to the zoning regulations for Bullock County and the cities of Hillview. Lebanon Junction, Mount Washington and Shepherdsville, sponsored by council member Bonnie Inlow. Summary. Section one sets forth that the zoning regulations for Bullock County and the cities of Hillview, Lebanon Junction, Mount Washington and Shepherdsville are amended as set forth in the ordinance. Section two sets forth that section nine point four zero zero related to the fee schedule is amended with respect to the fees for zoning map amendments, prior materials, zoning compliance for additions to buildings, plot surveys, revisions of plot surveys. Conditional use permits, dimensions, variances, zoning certification and postage fees and handling. Section three sets forth the severability clause. Section four sets forth the repillipar ordinances in conflict with this ordinance. Section five sets forth publication requirement.
Any questions? Anything anybody wanna bring up? We good? All right, any motion? All right, Rob?
Second.
Second by Ms. Jennifer?
Bonnie?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Faith?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you, council. All right, so new business, Ms. Catherine? Order two five zero zero six municipal order.
Municipal order two five zero zero six, city of Shepherdsville, a municipal owner of the city of Shepherdsville, Bullock County, Kentucky, recognizing Kinetic ABS KY LLC as the lawful successor grantee under the existing telephone and communications non-exclusive franchise ordinance bring to. Windstream Kentucky East LLC, whereas the city of Shepherdsville created and directed the sale of a telephone and communications non-exclusive franchise in the city of Shepherdsville pursuant to ordinance zero one five dash one eight two passed on April twenty seventh, two thousand and fifteen. And signed and published as required by law. And whereas the city of Shepherdsville previously granted a telephone and communications non-exclusive franchise to Windstream Kentucky East LLC herein after W K E pursuant to ordinance zero one five dash one nine two. Passed on July twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and fifteen and signed and published as required by law. And whereas. Ordinance zero one five one eight two, section eleven, gives W K E the right to assign the franchise to any person, firm or corporation able, ready and willing, willing to carry out the terms of the franchise. And whereas W K E has assigned the franchise to Kinetic ABS KY LLC herein after Kinetic, a corporation able, ready and willing to carry out the terms of the franchise. Now therefore, it is hereby determined and ordered by the city of Shepherdsville, Kentucky as follows. Section one, the city hereby acknowledges W K E's assignment of the franchise to Kinetic. And recognizes Kinetic as the grantee by assignment under ordinance number zero one five dash one nine two with full rights and responsibilities as provided therein. Section two, this acknowledgement is based on documentation provided to the city demonstrating the lawful assignment of the franchise to Kinetic, which is attached here too and incorporated as a fully set forth herein. Section three, this acknowledgement shall not waive any requirement for notice, approval or compliance with applicable law or franchise conditions, and the city reserves all rights to enforce compliance. With the franchise ordinance and to require updated insurance, contact information and operational disclosures from the successor grantee. Section four, the city clerk is directed to transmit a certified copy of this municipal order to Kinetic via attorney Derek Mills. Miles and shall retain a copy with the franchise records. Section five, the provisions of this municipal order are hereby declared severable, and if any section, clause, line, paragraph or part of this municipal order. Shall for any reason be declared invalid or unconstitutional, the same shall not affect the validity of the remainder of this municipal order. Section six, all prior municipal orders or parts of any prior municipal order in conflict herewith are hereby repealed. Section seven, this municipal order shall be in full force and effect upon adoption on this tenth day of November, two thousand and twenty-five. So are there any questions? Like, I tried to put in there what was going on, but are there any questions as to like why we're doing this, what happened? Okay.
You good?
Not for me.
No, uh, no competitors?
Well, so they already had the franchise and it's still in existence. They just want there to be a new grantee now, and they have that right to assign it. So we really are just recognizing it. Um, they've asked us to recognize that for their paperwork and, and really for ours as well. Um, and so, uh, I don't know about in twenty fifteen if there were any competitors.
Yeah, this is basically a, a subcontract.
Okay, Bonnie's saying no, but, yeah, so, they're just a bunch of mergers and new companies and all of that.
It's a regional aspect to, to where they actually have, manpower to do the kind of what they need done for the service. All right, any, any motion, please?
Uh, this is new businesses.
Oh, this is municipal order.
No, it's a municipal order.
It's a municipal order.
Okay, then motion.
All right.
That was, who was that, the first one, was it?
Brad made the motion.
Brad made the first?
Then I'm second, yeah.
Okay.
Second for.
Oh, I think Mike had something.
Do we collect any fee from, uh, Windstream now?
No, I guess.
Nothing?
No.
Yeah, it's sort of like a state thing and tax revenues and things like that. It's not really for us.
They're just adding.
It's not the same as the franchise with, uh.
It would be nice.
They're just adding another franchisee to their, okay.
Utilities work differently.
Yeah, I think they paid five hundred dollars at the time.
Not to us. I don't think they pay us anything, do they?
They, at the back end, when they made the bid, there was a five hundred dollar check. I don't know what that was for, but maybe, but that's it.
All right.
Mike?
Yes.
Faith?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
All right, so planning and zoning. I know Catherine and I are gonna be there Thursday night, so.
We've got Chris Wilson.
Uh, I, no, I'm sorry, yep, I, I put it up here for, all right, so I need the public hearing on Chris Wilson, if you wanna, no, Catherine, is anybody?
Okay, so this is, um. This is a rezoning of six nine nine North Buckman. Um, Brenda and I apologize for this not being on the agenda. It was an oversight on our part. It was advertised for tonight, so that's why we're moving forward. With it. It's a rezoning, um, I guess it's behind the rezoning that he did for those apartments on Buckman.
He got a small piece.
And it's going from, um, B one to B two. The purpose is to consolidate contiguous tracts. Um, and so that's kind of where we're, um, where we're at. Uh, what, can we take over?
Yes, uh, we went to the planning commission and requested the B one to B two just so that we could consolidate it. We originally submitted a plat to Charlie. And he noted that this small portion, it's point three three acres here where the star is, is a currently zoned B one, so we cannot consolidate it. Um, and just to refresh your old memory, I included the, um, site plan of the proposal before. This is for the, um. Multi-family development off North Buckman Street, and you can see on the right-hand side here, this triangular portion that was not part of the development. So he's. He's consolidated this portion with, that has the proposed development, um, back on the zoning that we did a couple of years ago at this point. And then, um. This triangular portion, he wants to consolidate as well, so that's the reason for the zoning. It's similar to that forty-four auto mart that you all did a couple of months ago, maybe a month or two ago. Um. Again, just to show you, it's, it's just this little portion here next to a current existing building, no plans to develop it. He simply just wants to consolidate the properties. And then here's the plat kind of, that was submitted with some notes on it, just showing that these two, these two pieces on the larger portion where the development is went from B two to R three. B two to R three and then B one to R three. So this has been consolidated as an R three tract. And then this portion was remaining B two, and then this portion that we've noted in pink. Is the portion that we're asking for the rezoning for so that we can add it to that triangular piece to consolidate.
Were there any comments on planning and zoning?
No comments, um, unanimous approval. It, um, it complies with all the countywide criteria, development area criteria and the future land use map intended uses. Um, so there were no comments on that.
Is there anybody here that's against it? Let's make sure.
You can sponsor an ordinance favor, okay.
Thanks, Bonnie.
Did you say he's not doing anything?
No, he just, he was just recording the plat, yeah.
Catherine in there, I just sent you a picture. I was at Big O, uh, about a month ago, took pictures.
Okay.
This is really, um, I don't, we don't, I don't understand why it's so high, like why the ground level's so high.
For the other portion of the development?
For the, what they're, what they're doing.
This is required.
You sent me, I, I was sending two pictures.
Because of the flood zone, it's taller than the pins.
Yeah, he's, I think he's been moving, that was part of, to get out of the flooding, the flood area.
Well, there's like places in the park we had to go four feet.
Yeah.
So I don't know what the distance is on that. I, I'll check with Arthur on Wednesday since we're closed tomorrow.
Okay. Yeah.
I'll, I'll, I'll send him a message.
I mean, is it gonna remain that high or is it there and they're gonna level it out a little bit?
It's like, almost as high as the building.
It's almost as high as Big O.
I got you, but I, my question still remains, is, uh, is that the height that it's gonna remain or they, they bringing it in and it's just at that height and it's gonna level out?
That's what we're asking.
It's not gonna be that high, but it's.
Yeah, I think there was a lot of dirt they had to bring in, um, but I don't think it's gonna remain that high for the, for the, that's also not the property that we're talking about today.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's a different conversation. Good.
Um. Definitely want, want to be in compliance with Arthur.
That's fine.
Yeah, Arthur Joe, Arthur might, no, you might wanna read out, reach out to him.
I'll reach out to him, make sure.
Probably plans about going out there.
Nah, well, and again, uh, part of that's, there's a lot of movement over there. He's not moving in the, it's, it's taking a long time to get this thing going. Don't know, I know there's been a couple of concerns along the way, but hopefully he's got them resolved and, you know, right now it's just that dirt moving. So what that means is he, he's got some work done on one side of that property and. I don't know what he's doing on the other part, I really don't.
As far as I know, he's still partnering with, um, I lost her name. I can picture him though, we, the guy that we met with, it has done developments in Louisville. So from what I understand, they're still partnering and developing.
It's the other Chris, it's the other Chris.
Yeah, his name's Chris too. I can't remember his last name was though.
Yeah, we'll find out. I mean, I'll reach out to Arthur on, uh, Wednesday, you know, if I get something, I'll send somebody guys.
And feel free to reach out to me if you want me to contact Chris Wilson about any concerns.
Yep, and if you do reach out to him and you have something that's pertinent to us, send it to us.
Yeah, I'll let him know, we discussed that at today's meeting.
But anyway, so on the piece of property that we are actually doing tonight, any, any other questions?
Wasn't there entrance to, like, were they putting a second entrance to the new apartments there on that property?
Yes, it was right next to it, um, cause it was gonna be like. Parking and then, and right here. So this, it's, it's next to this piece right here, but it's, you know, a little further down in Buckman. And then part of that was that we weren't gonna connect to Bishop Lane, cause we were, I won't, remember we went through a couple of plans, we were.
But were they gonna, was, was there gonna be an entrance like going up at an angle right here? I can't remember. Okay.
It was just this one here, cause we proposed two and then just you all, we, we talked about not doing on Bishop Lane cause of how narrow it was, so just one right here.
Okay.
But this is just gonna remain his property. It's not gonna be part of this development.
Okay.
All right. All right, Ms. Emily, well, we appreciate that. And, and, and I encourage you guys, a small piece of property, but anytime, please reach out, first meeting, uh, first reading, let's make sure that we reach out to whoever's the developer to make sure they get your questions before our second meeting. Okay, or any concerns you might have, or something you find out that they, they might need to know.
Sure, thank you guys.
All right, stay calm, stay calm. All right, but that said, uh, going back to planning and zoning, uh, Catherine and I are gonna be going there on Thursday. We're trying to make sure if you guys can make them, you know, sometimes it's difficult to make these meetings, but. I encourage as many of you guys to go to it, to hear what you hear. We can obviously get documentation for it, but we'll be there for that.
Yeah, I'll be presenting the text amendment that you all did by resolution to him.
Thank you, Ms. Emily.
Hey.
All right.
That's at seven o'clock.
Yes, it is. They have the, board of adjustments at six, right?
Physical court.
Physical court.
Yep.
We are last on the agenda. He told me cause they squeezed us in, um, so you don't have to get there right at seven. If you're just wanting to hear ours.
All right, board of adjustments, I haven't heard anything from department heads, Mr. Jody. So, you had an exciting evening, right? Come on, tell us about this exciting evening.
Sorry I was late.
No, it's okay. You were doing work.
Just a couple of things for you all, um, we supported the plane crash in Louisville last week. We were there for about forty-eight hours on the dispatch. We, um, we're, two days, we're continuing to support them in like command rows. Um, I'm going out tomorrow night and run a command row, and then we have people that are doing the, uh, recovery, helping the teams do recovery and also supporting just Oklahoma, whatever they need. They're reaching out all across the region. And we supported them through a lot. We have, uh, we had significant fire gear losses from, from that. We also had, um, and there, there'll be a lot of cost recovery based upon that incident. With, with that, we're, we're working through the fire gear with it now, and then that'll come, uh, next couple of weeks, but the cost recovery will come later whenever they. Uh, Louisville Metro EMA gets, gets to it and we'll, we'll work on that together. But, uh, we're, they're still out there, probably looking at at least another week. We'll be supporting them on, on that incident out there. Um, we got a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar grant on a mobile cascade system. Um, we're working through that, just, we just got awarded it, uh, two weeks ago. And mobile means it can go anywhere in the county. That's how we got it, was to basically support any incidents such as Jefferson County's incident or anything that we have in, in Bullock County. Which it's incredible, you know, for a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, it takes a, a lot of, of, of us to do that and we get to house it, so.
Do you have an ETA on, when do you think the grant somewhere in the mix is? Because we're gonna try to.
Probably first of the year, first quarter of twenty-six is the goal for that.
Jody, did you get that through AFG or was that a different?
That was through the state. It's a, a federal grant, yes, sir. Another one. Um, Cam is always looking and working to, to get those grants and, um. That one, we got, uh, turned down for it last year and we got it this year. So anything and everything, he's always, he's always getting on that. And of course, uh, last but not least, we had, uh, the Tricker Truck, which on, uh, when was that? Uh, Halloween, sorry. Um, that was a, a good, it was slower than normal just because of the night was.
It was very nice.
It was nice.
Outside and, yeah.
Yeah.
Was it football, football?
That's what we think and.
Yeah, and there was football game.
High school football and then of course, we'll, we'll, next year, we'll have planned a little, we'll see what we're gonna do on a Saturday next year. That's, uh, who knows? Vicki's always, already yelling at me on that.
So I do wanna make sure that, uh, for council, either that probably will either probably do it the twenty-fourth of November or the first and last meeting of December, that meeting on the eighth, I believe. Is to put out there, uh, amending our budget for the truck. So I'll, I'll make that, and, and just so you know, from an income standpoint, uh, just look over numbers today, we're actually in really good shape totally to, to absorb it. So what I wanna do is I just want to absorb the number. And I'm going to, at least right now, and then Catherine, you'll have to give with me on this to make sure, because we have a budget that we set out, but we think we're, we're looking really good. Property taxes are, from a standpoint of the county, what they did and what we actually received from that is gonna be a larger number than we thought. So revenue wise, we're gonna be okay, but for us to keep it in context, I would rather just make the increase, make the budget increase that much, the difference, the three hundred in the, in that truck area. And then make the difference on the budget and leave it like that. And let us run with that budget, because what's gonna happen is one of two things. I mean, we've got money in the bank to cover that. That's, that's not even an issue. You guys have seen the bank statements. But I think it's better for just to get the, the thing amended so that the budget looks like it's supposed to look like, so for both the, the expense and the total. And then what we'll do is, I, I tend to believe. We're not gonna be taking any money out of the bank. Just looking at some trends already, some people look, looks really good, some really things. If you look at the numbers, they're pretty solid. Watch your travel expenses.
Yes, sir. Um, yeah, just, uh, that should be delivered January-ish.
Yeah, I just wanna get it on the, I want, yeah, the worst comes to worst. Our first meeting in January, we'll, we'll finalize it and so, you know, but we'll have it all squared away that you, you know, truck's not going anywhere, it's coming to see us and, and I'll be good.
And then I'll get you numbers from this past incident that we had. It's obviously not just affecting She- Shepherdsville, it affected the entire city with.
Fifty-five agencies I heard were, you know, were told, fifty-five different agencies actually came to, to help out.
We probably lost ten sets of gear, couple a hundred foot of holes, um, but in, in time, in time.
No, we appreciate you doing it, cause that just shows our partnership with the rest of the station.
We're here for everybody else. The men and women, they, they kept, yeah, they really did, they really did a good job.
Appreciate that.
You're gonna have, um, you got enough to cover right now.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I'll, obviously keep you fully aware.
I think everybody's in the same boat you are, so.
Yeah.
It's gonna take a little while to, to recoup, I'm sure.
Yeah, um, I, actually I think we're gonna be, it's a quick turnaround being from a private, uh, um.
Well, I'm just being, actually getting the equipment probably is gonna be a little bit of turn, yeah, UPS will probably be pretty quick about covering.
Yeah, a lot faster than the federal government. A lot faster than the federal government.
You said it first. You said it first.
What about the firefighters though? This is something they've never, I, I can't imagine them ever really dealing with something of this magnitude. Are they mentally okay?
Um, yes, we, our, our goal is to debrief from that sometime in the next week or two.
Okay.
Um, the problem with it is, is just we're still out there.
You're still doing, yeah, you're still dealing with it.
And then bring somebody in to maybe debrief them. We, we talked about that earlier.
That's, that's, that's gonna be a challenge. I can't imagine what that's like. Can you imagine, especially the first ones on, on scene like that?
Unfortunately, it was, yeah, we were there in the first thirty minutes.
Gosh, but thank you all.
Oh, thank you all, thank you all for the support.
Appreciate it, Judith. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Alright, Chief Steve? It's gonna be tough one. It's a tough act to follow, man. You guys are separated birth.
Yeah, well, we, like I said, I was just telling him, I was glad he showed up, cause I was gonna have to do all that and talk about what a good response they had and what all, the good job they did, which, you know, it's a testament to Shepherdsville and them and all the agencies in, in Bullock County that went up there, so we can all be proud of that. Um, as far as police department side, we're just doing a few things, end of year stuff. We got some out shooting tonight. We're doing our qualifications, getting done with that. Getting, uh, the final plans together for, uh, light up Shepherdsville. Um, mayor wants us to clear the road out a little bit quicker this year. We're working on plans. We usually do a pretty good job, but once it turns on, on, uh, Preston or Buckman, it's usually about twenty, twenty-five minutes before we have it all wide open. So we're gonna try to do a little bit better this year. We put some things in of how we set things that we think we can get it open, uh, quicker, just on the outside chance. I know, you know, there's never a wreck on sixty-five on the weekend.
Never gonna happen on Saturday night about five o'clock.
Nothing like that ever happens.
They'll be working on sixty-five.
Yeah, and, uh, that was the other thing, just, uh, a couple of things for, we're starting to put this out on our Facebook. It's that time of year, gets cold, people warming their cars up, leaving them running, unlocked, people's cars get stolen, then, you know, it's, it's the world coming to an end, you know? So, simple thing, if you, you know, keep it locked, don't do it, uh, keep your car in there. Just a friendly reminder, people forget about, they think, you know, five, six, seven in the morning, nothing's gonna happen. Well, some routes, knock on wood, it's kind of going by the wayside. That's exactly when they've been out targeting, is getting in cars and stealing was five, six in the morning. So just if y'all could talk to her when you're talking to people, remind them, we'll put the reminders out, lock your car. You know, don't, don't leave it running unattended with the keys in it. So that would go a long way to eliminate some of this. Uh, the other one we only half joked about the traffic. Obviously, everybody here knows about, they're gonna tear the bridge down on Bell's Mill, start next Monday. So, you know, obviously there's two ways to go. You know, I would imagine pretty much at Bell's Mill and forty-four, everybody there's gonna be coming through Shepherdsville, the other half going to Mount Washington out. So people are just gonna have to adjust their schedules, leave earlier, you know, try to do some of that. There's nothing we can do. We're just gonna have to deal with it for five or six months and, you know, the mayor's talked about putting some signs up, which would be the best way to get through Shepherdsville and move on. So we've got that coming, um.
We're gonna just remind everybody.
I don't think it'll take that long really.
Yeah, it's gonna take a while.
Go over and look at it and I don't think it'll take that long, but you never know with the weather.
When they, when they tore down the one oh zone ten, which affected up by where I live, that was a good four or five months and it's mu- it was much lower to the, to the creek than what that one is. So I don't know, we can keep our fingers crossed and hopefully the. Yeah, it's, yeah, so it was all, so but, you know, they're coming out again to shut down sixty-five southbound, I think Tuesday through Thursday. And then I think it's the next week, starting the seventeenth is, there's gonna be some slow rolling of traffic as they do some, um, dynamiting along sixty-five in our county, so we're gonna be assisting on some of that, so.
You gotta stay home people.
Hey, so before I forget, just on, on the light up Shepherdsville for everybody to know, first of all, we do have a plan B and I think he came up with this and chief, I really appreciate this. Only thing nice I'm gonna say, but I promise I won't do it again. Um, but I, I do think it's important, he came up with a great idea that if we start coming down with the, with the parade and there's something happening on sixty-five, we're gonna turn down Plum or Abbott and just take it into the park. If there's something, we gotta have a plan like that, just in case. Hope nothing ever happens, knock on something, uh, but we do need to have a plan, so I do appreciate you coming up with that. Also, the light up Shepherdsville is all gonna be on the park side, on the farmer's market side, everything, their journey's gonna be over there, so.
There're gonna be food trucks happening down the Buckman Street, cause there was a food truck during the high school parade. And it was kinda.
Yeah, I don't, the food trucks are gonna be in the farmer's market area. We're not putting anything on, they've got maybe, if they have a little hot chocolate out there or something in, in front of their stores, that's fine, but there's no food trucks.
I think what we talked about this morning, there, everything's gonna be more on the west side of Preston and then back into the farmer's market. And I think the food trucks were gonna be moved by Mercy Hill and right around that turn, so hopefully it wouldn't.
Okay.
The, the biggest thing, we just wanted everybody to turn into the park and, and, cause we just mingle left and right on the road. And Stark is not set up like a, next year, hopefully everything, we squirted away to the town square that everything will be there anyway. So we're keeping it on that side of the road, just, just for, it's a Saturday night, five, six o'clock, you know? You never know what's gonna happen, but we obviously wanna make sure it's gonna be a, a big parade again, so it's, it's looking good and everything's going well.
But other than that, I just, any questions, any of y'all have, me and?
Yeah, yeah.
We can't let this go less than ours.
We're hurrying, we're all looking at it, that's a.
It's gotta be seven.
Well, hold on, I have a. I'm gonna redo some things then.
Well, she's got the hook ready to go. Alright, so obviously Tom and Scott are, are out, uh, and then starting next year, we are gonna include, uh, I haven't talked to Sam about it. We, we have talked about some different things. I, just so, congratulations to Sam and Angie. Wednesday is one year they've both been with us. That's our chief financial officer and our parks wreck, so we're very excited to have them. They've got their one year in place and I, and so Sam will, will start putting her into some of our meetings as far as giving updates, what's going on. We got a lot of stuff coming next year, a lot of different sport activities, all kinds of stuff going on, so we're pretty excited about that. Now, counsel. How about Brad Whittaker? Alright, he's just, we're glad he, we're glad he, he's, he's fatigued for all kinds of reasons. Yeah, he's gotta get some sleep.
He's still driving.
What you got for us, Faith?
I don't have anything. Thank you all for everything you did. Please sit there.
Good stuff, yep. Mr. Rob Adams?
Um, happy birthday Marine Corps today.
Oh, yes.
Um, happy Veterans Day tomorrow. And I think the army has a birthday coming up. I think that's also tomorrow. So happy birthday.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Rob. Alright. Ms. Bonnie?
Yes.
Are you fighting with something over there?
My cord.
Uh, okay.
Okay, uh, I've been in contact with a Ms. Warren with Bullock County Public Schools. Um, she wrote two grants last year to try to obtain fund, funding for Bullock County Public Schools in their efforts to attack the opioid crisis. Uh, they have obtained millions of dollars over the course of the next three years to enhance their work. Part of the goals and objectives is that they will collaborate with elected officials, community agencies and other resources to, to decrease student drug use, violence and death. So I've already, uh, hooked, um, her and Alpha Ministries up and I'm gonna get with you on her and for others.
That's awesome, that's awesome.
But it's, it's a good thing the schools have gotten some money to help with opioids, so.
It's happening right in those schools, ma'am.
Yeah.
Right in the hallways and anything else, we just don't wanna believe it, but it is happening. I mean, really, Villa School's pretty scary too.
And I also wanna thank the fire department for all they did, cause I was trying to get somebody's phone number and he stopped and gave you his phone number, you know, he was busy at the airport.
Did you, did you know that, Chief Steve, that Jody stopped what he was doing and helped her out? I just didn't know if you knew that. Alright, well, thank you, Ms. Bonnie. Anything else?
That's it.
Well, good. Ms. Jennifer, last but not least. Alright, well, thank you all. Counsel, thank you all and, oh.
What do you mean last?
Oh my god!
Motion to adjourn.
Second, oh, I'm sorry.
Just cause I'm over here quiet in the corner, you know, doesn't mean.
I apologize, Mike, I, I left you, I apologize.
Attack or anything like that, you know?
Rob was gonna read like some kind of, he was gonna read the Bible or something. I know what you're doing down there. What you got?
I just got some questions and I probably know half the answers, but, uh,
What you got?
I, I'll work on the other half. The, uh, obviously, I, I don't know how much attention our city's webpage gets, uh, the ones we put out and everything. It seems like everybody wants to, uh, communicate about the administration and the council, uh, in the social media platform, you know? Instagram, stuff like that. So, you know, I, I don't know how many of us ever actually here, but, uh, so people out there have concerns about what we're gonna do about I sixty-five. You got any suggestions?
I got a whistle. I'm gonna go out there and direct traffic.
Okay.
I got this. Give me the yellow jacket, I'm gonna go out there and take care of this. See, he's laughing back there, the young man's laughing.
That's, that's why. That's why I'm saying, they don't, they don't read our information, you know, they check with their neighbors and such first, but, you know, on the rare instance, I might take a wild hair and get back to them on something. I'd like to know what to tell them. But, uh, the other thing is, uh, are we attracting any more restaurants to our city?
We are, and but there's some things we cannot disclose that.
Does it meet with their approval or?
Oh, you'll like the, the two we're talking about.
Or is it just a restaurant?
Oh, no, no, but I, I can't, I can't disclose that. I can't.
And, and, and.
But they don't want them or chicken or Mexican, you know that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And I'll make this the last, uh, last issue here. Uh, who times our traffic lights? Can we do that? Can we, Bonnie, can you go out and time a, a light or two?
You know, I like, I like this question, I like this question, Steve, did you have to do that? Alright, I, I just, you know, we did actually have some things on it, the flow is better on, on that, in Oxis sixty-five, uh, actually one sixteen, if you haven't been on there, that, that double diamond is working.
Oh, good.
Supposedly the timing at forty-four and sixty-one, that's the one everybody's complaining about.
These probably aren't the ones they don't care about. They don't take them anyway, so, you know?
But like the, the turn lights for Buckman to go onto forty-four, so.
Oh, left, left to right, east to west.
I get complaints about this one.
From the downtown area?
Walmart or coming.
Yeah, Walmart.
From Louisville and this, how the turning lights go. I mean, I thought they were on sensors, so I thought once there's no cars turning, it'll turn, like I.
We've changed a couple of them, Ray, but Mike.
I mean, you know, and Arthur has said that they.
We've, we've, we've been tinkering with them. That's a, when you're talking about traffic, that, that's, that's a struggle. So that, that timing does help us because we are limited to what we can do to some of that.
So I guess we could always get the chief out there with the stop sign.
That's what I was thinking.
I was gonna ask the chief.
Oh, we went past seven o'clock.
I was gonna ask the chief. We have a lot of forty, uh, four, um, four by fours in Bullock County. If we just started taking exit one nineteen, it's not quite there yet. If we start making our own real road there.
Who's gonna check and see if they're road ready, licensed and got their permits? Chief?
On that note.
Are they, are they registered with the city, these four by fours to be out on the public streets?
Mike, do you have anything else for us?
We can't, we can't say, oh, I probably do, but I'll say something.
Alright, thank you, Mike. We appreciate that. We got a motion, we got a second. Alright, Brenda.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Faith?
I don't know. Yes.
It's seven, it's after seven, so I'll say yes.
Thank you all. Thank y'all for being here.